Commissioner Kwak.
President.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Klopp is currently absent, but she's on her way. Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Nating.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
And Chair Strongman is absent.
On to now, item two is consent calendar. There's one item consisting of three sets of minutes. Anybody wish to take the minutes off the consent calendar? Not anyone in the public? No? Okay. Ten, nine, almost here. Okay. Let it be noted that the Commissioner Klopp has arrived.
That's the wrong jacket to wear if you're sneaking in.
I'm taking a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes that are listed in item two A, please.
Second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Kwak.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
And Chair Strongman is absent. Motion passes.
Item number three is public communications. This is, if you wish to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, but not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the public comment? Seeing none? Is no one online? No? Very good. Ask the commissioners if there's any expedited communications on any of the matters on the agenda tonight? No? All right. None? We'll move on to the first public hearing. Is Chodri New Single Family Residence. This item is intended to be continued to a date uncertain and will be re-noticed at that time. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this matter, although it will not be acted on tonight? Seeing none? We ride along. We went on to item four B, Elia Restaurant Review of the Administrative Use Permit. And we have a staff report for that. I will note that we did receive more information from Elia tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the city. We are here tonight to review the current administrative use permit in regards to the alcohol component of the business, Elia, that's located at 1520 Locust Street. The applicant representing the project, Guy Houston, is also here tonight to go over their business operating plan after my presentation. And just to quickly orient you with the site, Elia Restaurant is located in the downtown core area of Walnut Creek. It is located between two other eating and drinking establishments, Limone and Vanessa's Bistro. The surrounding area consists of a mix of commercial uses, and there is a mixed-use multifamily development located directly across the street. And just to quickly go over some background for the prior AUP approvals, the former restaurant, Locanta Grill, that occupied the space at 1520 Locust, was granted an administrative use permit, which was approved to allow the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol till 11:00 PM seven days a week, under a type seven alcohol license that allowed beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And the most recent approval was for Elia, approved to operate under the existing AUP. It was a continuation of the previously approved use because there was no substantial alterations to the mode or character of the previous restaurant, Locanta Grill, which was previously occupying the space. Elia was approved for the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol till 11:00 PM seven days a week. And this was approved through a zoning compliance letter, since there were no substantial changes. And Elia has been operating in Walnut Creek since October 24th of 2022. And from that time till June 13th of 2023, Elia was operating under a type 47 ABC license, serving alcohol, however, without an AUP or city approval. And in this time, the Walnut Creek Police Department did find Elia serving alcohol and operating without an AUP. Elia was advised to obtain city approval to serve alcohol at their establishment. And following that, Elia did submit for an AUP ZCL, requesting the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol. That was submitted on April 12th of 2023, and it was approved for them to start the operations of allowing alcohol on June 13th of 2023. And that condition is condition number four in attachment three of your agenda packet tonight. And here is a quick look at the floor plan of Elia Restaurant. And it also includes a outdoor patio dining area that seats about 20 customers. And there is a second-floor mezzanine area. This area is specifically caters for private events or parties, so not for the general public. And here I will call upon Lieutenant Slater with Walnut Creek Police Department to go over the summary of events for Elia.
Thank you, Simmer. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Lieutenant Slater from the Police Department. I'd like to go over the slide with you real quick. If you do some quick math, you'll see that it says 42 CAD events that were recorded with our Police Department. CAD is computer-aided dispatch. It's just an electronic log of anything that police personnel would respond to. And we have 42 events associated with Elia from the date of January 23 to present. Of those 42 events, it's not going to equal the events that are broken down, because I wanted to explain what those topics were for those calls for service. We said that a total of 10 police reports were taken, but of those 10, they could be something as simple as someone reported that their purse was stolen from the establishment, so it would not pertain to the AUP. Four of those police reports, though, were alcohol-related, a disturbance, or AP violation directly, so that is why a police report was taken for further documentation. Of the 42 events, we did have 13 compliance checks. You could also call that a security check, a bar check of the establishment, just like our officers do routinely every weekend. And the 13 times that they went out of those 42, we did find out that they were doing violations of the AUP, basically serving alcohol and being open with all of the stuff that we were discussing after the hours of 11:00 PM. Of the 10 times that we went out, we're happy to report that there were no issues, and that was documented, saying that they were closing on time, there was no sales or consumption, and that was good on their part. And then we had 12 calls for service total that had absolutely no relevance to the AUP. Example was an officer made a traffic stop outside of the business, and that's the address that they used when they called dispatch. So they just said, "Oh, it was in front of Elia," but it was not actually making a traffic stop with vehicles inside of the establishment, so it would have, again, no relevance. Doing the math, when we talk about the violations of the AUP, as just previously mentioned, the business was open without an AUP since October of 2022. So we had been monitoring the business ever since we got calls for service advising that, hey, this place is in operation without the proper paperwork. So we notified the city from the Police Department aspect of seeing the after-hours establishments going on, and we just started taking note of what we were seeing, that if AUP had been done with 11 o'clock closure, then the business shouldn't have been open. But we saw that they had multiple times that they were opening up late at night, and that equaled 17 times that we went out there, did a check, and found them in violation of what would have been an AUP. Thirteen of the violations did occur after the hours of 11:00 PM. And what we've noticed is that when we have calls for service, we have limited police resources at night, and so we'd like to point out that the hours for service matter to the Police Department quite a bit. And when we have calls for service, and they tend to be of significant after 11:00 PM or even midnight, and we have limited resources to respond to multiple emergencies at once. Happy to report that we have not had a lot of issues at Elia overall, in terms of a massive police response or major fights, but we did have one significant fight that was of a woman that was overly intoxicated, and she went to jail after causing a disturbance and even breaking two planters in front of the business. There was another call that we didn't want to say was AUP-related, but it shows a concern that propensity of violence can happen anywhere, where a woman got into an argument with another patron in the bar, picked up a glass, and threw it at someone's face. That's very serious of the offense, but it wouldn't say technically AUP-related, other than that they had been drinking, but they were not charged with any type of alcohol-related offense. But they were arrested for obviously assaulting someone else, and that would be considered a felony or aggravated assault. So from the Police Department's standpoint, we've been monitoring this. We have some concerns with everything that we've been observing, since we want to make sure that everyone has a safe environment downtown, and we want to make sure that if everyone's following the rules, we're not going to have things that escalate to other businesses that we've had downtown. Like I can throw out the old name of Kroger's, we're trying to avoid something like that. And I'll be available later if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. Back to the presentation. So based on all of the violations that have been occurring at Elia, the city did send a notice of violation, which was basically a warning letter to the business owner notifying them and informing Elia to comply with the AUP. It should also be noted that, as part of this letter, it stated that failure to comply with the AUP would be subject to the enforcement provisions in the municipal code, and also warned that continued operation and violation of their AUP could result in modification or revocation of the AUP. And following the issuance of this first letter, the business owner did meet in person with Captain Hibbs and Lieutenant Slater of Walnut Creek PD on July 2nd to discuss the conditions of this AUP. And both officers made explicitly clear that Elia's alcohol sale, service, and consumption must end at 11:00 PM. The owner did assure the officers that he would not continue to violate the AUP, and this conversation was documented as part of this letter that I've included here. This was a letter that Police Department did hand-deliver to Elia after that incident. Despite July 2nd conversation with Walnut Creek PD, on July 5th, Walnut Creek documented yet another incident of sales and consumption of alcohol occurring after 11:00 PM. So on July 18th of 2024, the city did send the second letter informing the business owner they were again found to violate the AUP due to the service and consumption of alcohol beyond the 11:00 PM cutoff time for this business. Therefore, action is being taken, and the purpose of this meeting is tonight to look into Elia's business operating plan and AUP. So tonight, the city is requesting the Planning Commission to review the operation of Elia for conformance with the administrative use permit, take public testimony and make findings that Elia is operating in violation of the AUP, and also modify Elia's AUP by reducing the alcohol sale, service, and consumption hours. And Elia, I also wanted to mention that Elia and city staff have been in communication since the issuance of the first warning letter, and an updated business operating plan was also submitted. I believe you have a copy of that business plan as part of your agenda packet tonight. It basically showed some modifications to the sound system to reduce noise, training to staff to monitor the noise complaints that are coming in, and changes to Elia's overall marketing strategy, and policy updates regarding alcohol hours, basically alerting the patrons in the bar area and also on the menu that there will be no service or consumption beyond 11:00 PM. And Elia did, as part of these conversations, suggest that a conditional use permit would be more appropriate for their business, as that would allow them to serve alcohol past 11:00 PM. The city's response to that is, just per city's practice, it is to ensure success with the compliance of the AUP before expanding the business hours, or sorry, the alcohol hours through a conditional use permit, and as part of the city and Walnut Creek PD efforts to manage the oversaturation of alcohol establishments in the downtown core area. And the city will monitor the business to verify compliance of the AUP conditions before considering a conditional use permit to serve alcohol past 11:00 PM. As so, tonight, the Planning Commission may modify or revoke the permit or entitlement upon making one or more of the findings. The two relevant findings that apply to the violations of Elia's AUP are highlighted red on this slide. And Elia, again, is subject to this finding, as they've repeatedly violated the conditions of the AUP by serving and consuming alcohol beyond the permitted hours, and despite warnings, and the more recent violations have occurred very closely to each other. And the second finding is that because of the repeated violations of the municipal regulations and ongoing operational issues, they do pose a threat to the safety and welfare of the surrounding community. And there is also a concern of drain on limited police resources, and I believe Lieutenant Slater did want to expand on that, or did you want to wait for question and answer?
Accuivation.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. So with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission review the operation of Elia for conformance with the conditions outlined in the AUP, take further public testimony, make findings that Elia is operating in violation of the conditions of its AUP, and modify Elia's AUP to bring them in conformance by requiring Elia to cease sales and service of alcohol at 9:00 PM daily, and cease consumption of alcohol at 9:30 PM seven days a week. And after six months from the modification of this AUP, staff will reevaluate Elia's operation to determine whether or not there have been any additional violations of any other conditions of the AUP. And at that time, staff will either reinstate the original hours of sale, service, and consumption back to 11:00 PM, however, if thus determined that Elia hasn't committed any additional violations, or maintain the modified hours of 9:00 PM for sales and service of alcohol, and 9:30 for the consumption of alcohol if determined Elia has committed other violations of the AUP. And these recommendations modifying the AUP for Elia are also included in the draft resolution that's included as attachment one of your packet. And I also wanted to include that this standard language was accidentally omitted from the draft resolution, so staff does recommend adding this language back into the resolution after you make your decision on tonight's, the action you take tonight. And with that, I do conclude my presentation, but I will be happy to answer any questions. And Lieutenant Slater is also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you for that report. There was a lot of different agencies you were working with together to put that together, and we really appreciate that. I did have a question, though. I see the business plan is, and then the modifications to the business plan have been presented to us for our consideration, but I didn't see any sort of safety or security plan. And I know in the past, when we've had a lot of interaction with the Police Department, some businesses have provided that to us, and I wondered if that was available, or it doesn't exist, or as long as I, I didn't want to make sure I missed something.
Yeah. All of the data or information that was provided is included in the agenda packet, and the additional information provided by the applicant's team has also been provided, copies in paper, so no additional security plans were submitted.
Great. Thanks for confirming that.
Commissioner Reiser.
I have a couple of questions for Lieutenant Slater, if I may, and clarifications. On the, on the report, I'm looking at the report called Synopsis of Related Events, and there's clearly a lot of items listed on it. And one, you already made clear what the CAD demarcation means. Can you, a lot of them say "service" to citizen. What, can you explain what that means?
Anything that we do is considered a service. It's a catch-all category. We are trying to get a little bit better with our, with our dropdown screens, so it'll be more specific about a welfare check versus a service which is very ambiguous to a, what literally called a security check to a bar check. We're trying to make sure that the officers use the same one, so it's consistent. That was very time-consuming for this group, particularly me to go through each one of those to make sure that it was applicable to the AUP or not. A lot of those were mentioned to be like checks. They would say, it would just say "service," but that was an officer going in there, checking in with the staff, and either they've noticed a violation of the AUP or they did not. Those were the catch-all notes, also recorded on their body-worn camera whenever they talked to anyone, and so we did a lot of those reviews, and that was it.
Got it. That makes sense. Okay. The, so the report states that from January 1st, 2023 to present, there have been 42 calls, and we kind of broke, you already kind of broke that down and took away, it kind of broke down to just a few that seem substantive, if you will. How does that compare to other, other restaurant bars in downtown?
So I had a feeling this question was going to come up, but it's hard for me to get that data with every single establishment. I can tell you that how it generally works with the downtown bars and restaurants, it, the calls for significant, excuse me, the calls actually increase for the Police Department the later it gets, as the business is let out. That happens to be where people, their intoxication levels arise, people tend to loiter, and we have, we have concerns of DUIs, driving under the influence situations. We have a propensity of occasionally people will fight because they didn't finish whatever started within the bar establishment they were frequenting, and so we have to deal with that. And a lot of our resources have specifically been spent this summer between the establishments of Fuego, which is on the south side of Locust Street, and Dan's, which is on the north side of Locust Street, basically at that intersection, because they are open the latest. And so it just happens to be that Elia is right in the middle, and if they're, we're getting stuff that's in the middle, branches out when they're done. If people don't go home, we send to see people go to the other establishments, because some people don't want to go home early anymore. I guess that's something people do in their twenties.
Right.
I think I can remember that. But I can tell you that without hard data, I can just tell you that the calls for service do increase at some of those establishments, and because we have less resources available at that time compared to during the day, it's a concern for the Police Department.
Sure.
But we don't have an abundance of calls at any one particular establishment at this time that I can, without looking up data, but I can tell you that when we go out on our weekend patrols, we went for the downtown activity, we frequent all of the bars randomly to check to make sure that everyone is in compliance, people are not overcapacity, people are not over serving alcohol, and that people are mindful that we're out there so that they'll take good choices and make good choices to drive home safely.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you. I was, I was also, I've been on the commission a few years now, and we, this is not our first kind of rodeo with regard to reviewing such, such cases. Is it, coincidentally or not, a year ago this month, we, we looked at Spoon Tonic and did something, so I was just kind of, I was going to kind of go back and say, as a result of, of the decision that was made there, and what, kind of restricting the alcohol and whatnot, what, what kind of changes did you see there?
Actually, there was a significant change. The calls for service at Spoon Tonic Lounge were reduced dramatically. We rarely get a call there at all anymore, and, and that just, which is what we wanted, was to have no more calls for service, no more acts of violence. And I, I just, after being in this job for 24 years, I can tell you that, what my mom told me was very true, good things don't happen after midnight.
That's right. And then lastly, isn't there some ad hoc, I remember in the past, there's some ad hoc committee where the restaurant owners and bar owners and whatnot, and the police get together once a month, and I don't think Spoon Tonic even at the time was involved in that, in that committee. Is that the case here?
I can speak to that. They do meet approximately once a month. We have in our, we have our Walnut Creek Downtown representative here in the audience, and I can tell you that Elia has been represented very well at all of these establishments, all of these meetings for the last several months.
Great. Okay. Very good. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, staff? I just, if you have a moment, I'm just, of the, I think it was 13 substantive violations or reports, how many of those occurred on Friday or Saturday?
All of those were on a Friday or Saturday.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll ask the applicant to make the presentation. I'm sorry, 10 or 15 minutes? Fif, yeah, 15 minutes, if you would. Doesn't have to be that long, but.
Mr. Vice Chair and members of the commission, my name is Guy Houston. I'm here this evening representing Elia Restaurant and owner Fatih Ulas, who is here with his, his team as well. I might add that Elia has a sister restaurant in Pleasanton and is opening another Elia soon in San Carlos. I want to thank Ms. Gill for, in the Planning Department, who has clarified questions that we had regarding the, the police reports and kind of going over and drilling down what's, what's really going on at 1520 Locust Street. One, one quick comment I'd like to make is, I have, I have no idea what you were referring to as far as that other, other establishment, but at no time, we are not a bar. We are a restaurant that has a bar. And so there is no time that we're ever serving alcohol where there's not food service in place. And, and so, and we're very proud of the food that we have, and I think a lot of people really like it. But we appreciate the clarifications from the police reports. Initially, it was quite alarming on our side to see, you know, dozens over 40, and then kind of how it got broken down to where, you know, there, there are four violations and there's nothing good about that. And, and so we stand here today to try to, to work through that. Elia understands the seriousness and nature of these infractions and has redoubled its efforts to comply with all aspects of its AUP. It is regrettable it has come to this, but ultimately, they believe that this will make them a better restaurant in serving the community in the future. They have instituted some changes that may seem small, but it's actually quite significant, the operational changes that has made it easier for them to comply. I've summarized these changes on that, I gave you a big, big packet, most of it is just for reference, but on the cover, they have made changes on-site. They, formerly, they had, the restaurant was, had a seating, their last seating was at 10:30, and so they've rolled that back down to 10:00 PM to enable more time. The signage and marketing, maybe not surprising, but a lot of the pushback that they've had regarding this 11:00 PM policy is from their customers. And so educating them and really making sure that they know is important. So previously, there was no notification of alcohol policy at the bar or on any of the menus. Now, we have signage at the bar. We also have signage in the employee room to make sure that, you know, we notify our employees that this is very important. The online menus that we, and then the printed menus that we have, all state the 11:00 PM policy at this time. In the past, we had, as we approached 11:00 PM, when there was the DJ, the DJ would be the one that would announce to the patrons that this time is up. And so now it has been professionalized, so now the manager and the onsite staff is the one that goes and makes sure that people know, and collection of any, any alcohol that's still outstanding. Another area I think is important is, is how they market themselves and their social media, their Instagram account. There, there was an emphasis on alcohol for their Instagram accounts. It's fun, and they do a great job in food and beverage. But we are committed now to making sure that all reels that go on Instagram have food and alcohol, or it has to include food. Monitoring of the DJs, the DJs that are there, making sure that, you know, they present a, the proper image and the proper messaging, and so, so Elia is monitoring what their social media and how it reflects on, on Elia. And then it was talked about a little bit, but really, nothing's changed about the noise. You keep monitoring the noise and the acoustic levels and make sure that you're in compliance before and currently, that we're not exceeding the maximum levels prescribed by the city. So this has, has already helped. It's made it easier for staff to, to enforce this because it's on the menus and people know it coming in. We feel that ultimately, Elia needs to apply for a CUP, but I know that that is sometime in the future. We have to prove ourselves, and I believe that they will. The staff recommendation for the penalty, I believe, was made prior to the clarification of the police synopsis of related events and their narrative. The two-hour rollback in six-month time period is quite severe. We would like to propose respectfully that we meet halfway on this penalty phase. Cutting two hours to 9:00 PM would mean alcohol service would have to end at 8:30 PM to ensure compliance. PM to ensure compliance. This would really make it difficult to even turn tables once, and if you know anything about restaurants, turning tables is, is what it's all about. In this scenario, it would be in effect a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine over the six months. We propose that we are cut back to ten PM for three months. This would enable Elliott to show that they are in compliance with the rules. We will be able to then resume, if everything is as it should be, resume to our original AUP in time for December and the holidays. Elliott is already booked for the holiday season, it would be an incredible penalty to endure for six months. So, three months would get us right before Thanksgiving, and then they would not be having to cancel bookings that they already have at their restaurant. Cutting back one hour for three months means we would stop serving alcohol at nine thirty PM in order to finish up drinks by ten PM. Still a big financial penalty, but not nearly as severe as the two hours. We appreciate the city's position, and we will also be more diligent in the future with permits and processes and for permits and our licensing now and in the future. If we had understood these processes a little bit better, we likely would not have been here in this situation. One additional point and request, so much in this, this whole process has been focusing as, as it should, the violations regarding alcohol. Our business plan that we originally submitted to the city indicates that we close at eleven PM on weekends. From our perspective, from Elliott's perspective, that meant that the latest that they're open for food and to take orders is eleven PM for food. The patrons can still eat the food when it's prepared. We are a restaurant first, and we want the ability for guests to enjoy their meal. To clarify this practice, we would like to amend our hours of operation for food to midnight so that people can enjoy their meal and get out there in an orderly manner. This would allow guests to linger, enjoy music, and allow staff to clean up before they lock the doors up. We respectfully ask that you support our request for this modified solution. A bit of good news in your packet at the end, it's at the end, Elliott was featured this week nationally on the Travel Channel where they talked about Elliott and also Walnut Creek, and the Eat Local Walnut Creek program. So, a little bit of good news is always, always helpful. I am here for answering questions, but we also obviously have our Elliott representatives, our general manager, Mr. Bekir Akas, and Mr. Ulas here to answer any questions that you might have about, about our proposal and how we intend to follow all aspects of the AUP.
Start the questions, actually, I have one, a couple for you. Just to be clear, the, the request for midnight, that's, would be on Fridays and Saturdays?
Yes.
And...
Through the chair, if I may just comment on that, so the consideration for the commission tonight is strictly related to the AUP and alcohol service hours, unrelated to the, to overall business hours?
Yeah. And the, the proposed, actually, that's a question for the staff. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner, rise.
I just have a quick question, probably for management, for...
Sure, Bekir.
Just like more of a curiosity, I guess you gotta state your, state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Bekir Akas, I'm the general manager at Elliott Walnut Creek.
Great, thanks for being here. Is, from a techno, technology perspective, can your, can your point of sale system be programmed not to allow alcohol to be ordered after certain hours? I mean, I know that's it for like happy hour and whatnot, and, I mean, it would just make sense that you can't even punch it in or can't, I know, I know it's not gonna like be the be all, end all, but it's, might be just something to consider for...
It will, it will be manageable, so we can arrange our POS system that there is no sale after eleven, which is already, we don't have a sale after eleven after the, we receive the violations, it's just, the problem is taking the glass out of the hand of the guest, so that is the main issue that we don't already serve after eleven PM.
Got it, okay, that's it for me, thank you.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Ward.
I was wondering if you could give us a little bit of insight into how these July violations occurred, because it seems to me it's very serious to have a scary letter from the city and the police department and then have an actual in-person conversation and have yet another violation occur only days after that. So, I wonder what kind of lapse in your protocols allowed that to happen and how you've changed that?
Sure. First violation we have received, we have been informed, there was alcohol consumption after eleven, the police were regularly coming and checking with the operation, during operation time, and they were just asking, is there any service? So, we were taking all the bartenders out of the bar, and there was no sale. However, people were still holding their glasses, we are trying to collect them, and then we received the violation letter from Mr. Chip Griffin. So, this, this is after like ten, thirteen days later, I have received the violation letter, I was not aware that we had an in violation. After that, I just reached out to the planning department, asking, we had an application from last year regarding to extended hours, so we asked, however, we apply as an AUP instead of CUP, because I worked in the restaurant overall six years with the Locanta Bar and Grill, and my operation hour that, that time till eleven, nothing changed during that time. However, when we received, when we got to Elliott Walnut Creek, the business plan was pretty much similar, still we were serving till eleven, and second violation was about eleven oh five, that I already talked with the Mr. Slater and the Captain Hibs, what can I do to make it better, and I want to be example business? So, what are, what are the actions I need to take? So, it was the fourth of July weekend, Mr. Slater came to business, asked me, how was it the Friday? It was a very slow night. On the fifth, we had reservations till ten thirty, which we couldn't cancel already, and reservation was late. So, they just came eleven oh five, they saw the glasses, which we were already trying to take the glasses away from the guest, they just told us, this is another violation. There is no sale on July fifth about the alcohol, it's just like, we tried to take the glasses, but it's not always easy, and I inform all the staff, we printed the menus, and after that, we received the second violation.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. I, I do have a question about the business plan and your training and security systems that you have in place. You know, I notice the business plan focuses a lot on the dress code and noise, and then there's kind of a line about mitigating risk to safety, but we've seen some pretty serious incidents occurring here, and I'm wondering, do you have a written staff policy or training with regard to over serving, you know, drink tampering issues, you know, that we're hearing about bartenders assisting women who are in danger, or actually anybody in danger, or being harassed by dates or just other patrons, or general security staff protocols for all of that? Because I know we've all been to different establishments where it's pretty clear that there are policies with regard to that in place, and I didn't see anything in the written materials with any of that, and I wonder what you're doing with regard to that?
Yeah, we do have a, at the door, we do have a, a security person that checks everyone's IDs, and if there is any miscommunication with guests with each other, or any of my employees comes and tells me, hey, I think there is a problem going on. We have every Friday, Saturday, a security person is at the door nine to midnight, every night, and all of my servers and bartenders are certified to serve how many alcohol, how many glasses of alcohol they can serve, they are all certified, and we have it also in our policy stating that's how we should approach the guest if they are intoxicated, and I'm the in charge person, if there is anything going on, I'm the first person contacts with the guest and explain the situation and take them out safely, if necessary, we need to call police, we call police officers as well. All of my staff is aware of our safety protocols.
Great, thank you very much for clarifying that, I appreciate that. I think that's all I have, thanks.
Let me just ask, the, I can imagine that, you know, the bell rings and you, waiters go around saying, you know, give me a glass, you've just taken two sips of your wine, it's been there half hour, but you've only taken two sips. Is there some procedure you have for five minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes beforehand, making an announcement or going around table to table, however you want to do it, saying, you know, fifteen minutes, we gotta collect the glasses, and we hope they're empty?
Yeah, we do announce that already, and each server is now, we used, we, we used to not to do that, but now each service, each rest, each person coming to restaurant, they know already ten thirty is the last time that they can get their drink, and my servers also informing, if you are coming for a dining with your family at ten, ten fifteen, we will inform you verbally, and on the menu is written already, on the menu it says like no alcohol consumption at eleven. However, we still say that to our guests, and we will be able to take your glasses at latest ten forty-five, you need to give your glasses, because the more time we give them, they are just like trying to extend, I'm not done, give me a few more minutes. We have also some rude comments from the guests to our staff, so I have been dealing with that a lot, so we just take it to ten thirty, last drinks can be served, so that they give enough time for the guests, so till eleven, so half an hour is a pretty good enough time to finish up a drink, and if you are informed, I think lately we did not have any issue over a month, we did not have any issue, and Officer Slater also came and asked if it was working, so, so far everything is working pretty good. We don't have any other violations, we don't have sale after eleven, and current hours are, ten thirty is the last table seating, so however, we take it to ten, so that it gives us more time to like serve consistently.
Thank you.
I was just saying, these changes on the menus, it said this has happened in the last two to three, three weeks.
Yeah.
Wasn't in place in, in June and July.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much, I'm sorry, Commissioner Quark.
Yes, so one question I have for you is, I noticed that the pictures here, they seem to be in bright daylight, but you know, eleven PM is a very different time of hour to be doing service, and so, what is the lighting in the restaurant or at the bar at maybe ten, eleven, nine, ten, eleven?
It's bright.
It's bright?
It's visible from everywhere, it's bright.
Okay.
So, we do have LED lights surrounding the bar, it might be a daylight, but still in the evening, we have bright POS system where the screen is, so where we charge everyone's card, so that notice is located right next to it, and then the second notice is when you go to restroom, you will, you have to pass there when you go to restroom, it is right next to it, and also the, each menu on the drinks, where you order your drinks, it's stated all, in all pages, and also on the, whatever you want to order, you will see that.
Okay, so then, so then I think it's pretty fair to say the customers would be able to clearly see the notices?
Yeah. And we, we just, lately, I don't have any problem taking the glasses, the thing is, I'm just like, I inform you, unfortunately, I need to follow with the city policies, these are the policies I need to follow, please respect that, and they are like, oh, okay, we don't want you to get in trouble, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
I have a question for staff. The applicant is asking for three months rather than six months, maybe this is for Lieutenant Slater. What was your thinking in asking for six months, is that really, is that a period that you found is sufficient and necessary to establish a pattern?
After talking of this over with planning, and this is why the, the recommendation with us is, is a united front between the city and the police department, the six months is something that I believe that we are familiar with when we do, if there is ever an AUP or a CUP violation that is brought forth to the commission, thankfully, that does not happen often, but when it does, it's of serious note because we are trying to keep everything to this best interest for the businesses to maintain what they need to do and then keep everything safe so we can have a lively and vibrant downtown.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Lieutenant Slater, while, while you're up there, sorry. I happen to think that the Goldilocks option of like not just right in between or whatever, considering what was said tonight in terms of the changes that have already been implemented since, and what they found out since, et cetera, might seem like a reasonable, a reasonable halfway point. Is that, is that an adequate amount of time to, to evaluate for the police department?
We are able to do all of our statistical analysis that needs to be done, I'm, I've been actually the weekend watch commander all summer long, so I'm pretty in tune with what's going on. I can say that Elliott has been doing, has been doing their best, especially recently, to make sure that with these changes that were documented. If, if you guys give them three months, we will have all of the information that you need at that time to answer your questions, to see if they have been in compliance.
Okay, very good, appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, bring it back to the, oh, public comment. Anyone, a member of the public would like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission and open it for discussion. Would like to start?
I don't, I don't mind starting, sure.
Mr. Riser.
Obviously, I've been, I've been vocal here with the questions and whatnot, I, I've been to Elliott a few times, I happen to like the restaurant, it's, it's clearly not a bar operating, masquerading as a restaurant, it's a, it's a good restaurant, it's a great contribution to Walnut Creek. But as, as we've learned as a commission, with other cases that were before us that I've mentioned before, there's a tipping point, going from vibrant to violent, don't want to say there's any violence or anything, but going from vibrant to violent is a very fine line, that tipping point, and so I do want to be cognizant of what that is, and take, and we've always taken the recommendations of the police department quite seriously in terms of the resources expanded, et cetera, but that being said, I for one, I'm, I'm of the opinion that the, as I mentioned, that the Goldilocks option of, of maybe just splitting the, splitting right down the middle might be, sounds reasonable to me, in terms of the nine thirty time to announce it and ten o'clock to glasses are pulled. That's one commissioner's opinion, thanks.
Commissioner Ward.
Hi too, I've been a little talkative here with regard to my questions and concerns. You know, it's really important to us that we both support businesses in our community and also make our downtown area a safe place for people to be, whether that's me or my twenty something kids or whoever, whoever wants to come out and enjoy it. I too have enjoyed the food at Elliott, it's a great, great restaurant, I've had a lot of good meals there, and I will say, it's a lively atmosphere at times, you know, people do seem to be enjoying themselves, but I'm very concerned that, that there would be a suggestion by, you know, very experienced restaurant professionals that you had no idea how this permit process worked or how the hours of operation worked, you know, especially operating another restaurant in Pleasanton and, you know, taking over for Locanta, you know, basically just stepping in to that existing business, it just is surprising to me, and I just don't like the idea that it has to get through so many steps and come to this commission before people make substantive changes in their operations to protect the health and safety of the community overall as well as patrons that are at the restaurant. So, that's what's troubling me here. You know, I, I don't want to do anything to make it harder for you to, to have, to conduct your business, because it is a popular and really great, great place to be, but the rules are not arbitrary and they're not unfair and they, they were very clear, so that's where my concern's coming from here, and I'm, I'm just troubled by, by that, although I am heartened by the, some of the changes you've made recently, and they do seem to be, have some effectiveness.
Thank you. Commissioner Needy.
I have a question, it's probably to the applicant. Oh, sorry, I have to say, I always, not loud enough sometimes, guys. My question is for the food, because you're saying that you're food first, drinks second, and so, how much food are you selling? Like, what, what is, because we, I forgot about Spoon Tonic, well, I didn't forget it. A year ago, we had asked, what are the sales that you're making, right, with regards to, so now for food, since that's your staple, I would say, if it did go to the nine, nine thirty, do you think it would hurt your food sales?
It will definitely would hurt the entire reservation system, so in order for me to make the business profitable, we, we give our guests, so we work with the open table, very reputable reservation system, so in order for me to turn the tables twice, so I, like lately, it was hot during the summertime, so first reservation starts at seven, seven thirty, so it just, I make the first seating. However, the second seating starts around eight thirty, nine PM, so that it could end at eleven. So, the moment we reduce the hours, I will... So the moment we reduce the hours, I will be only be able to make, uh, one seating. So that means we are basically, uh, cutting the half of the revenue. And my food to alcohol sale ratio is sixty-four percent to thirty-six percent alcohol, sixty-four percent food. So food comes first.
So you make sixty percent of your food sales at the eight P M. hour turn? Sorry, you said you go six.
Five, five P M. to, uh.
It's an hour and a half, right?
Uh, two hours.
Two hours. Okay.
However, the weather affects, so we can even use some days the patio. So inside, uh, indoor, we do have sixty-four seedings. So I need to be able to turn that twice, that business can be profitable.
So there is still a strong amount of sales that is occurring at that five, six, seven, seven, at the nine P M.?
That is correct.
Thank you.
My pleasure. And we do have, I want to mention also, we do have Wednesday, Thursdays, uh, we do have, uh, jazz music. So we, we try to build a really nice, uh, atmosphere with that music. And people are, seem to be really enjoying. And so we will have to cancel most likely. And it will also affect the business because we have so many regulars. They are just coming to enjoy really high, nice quality music because we have a talented artist as well. And so it will definitely take out from the atmosphere we are providing, the hospitality we are providing. It will be definitely affected by that action.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. Um, so the commission has staff's recommendation and I am hearing some discussion of potentially differing from what staff's recommendation has been. The planning commission does have discretion to make a different decision on the A U P. modification. Um, but I would recommend if that's the direction that the planning commission is going, establishing based on facts why the planning commission is making that decision. Uh, we would, staff would then have to amend the resolution, establish a different, additional recitals based on the facts that the planning commission has made this evening and would likely need to then come back with a modified resolution to this commission. So I did, if, if that is the direction that planning commission chooses to go, um, just to keep that in mind that there will be a need to be a decision just based on, on facts that are provided.
Thank you. All right. Um, I tend to agree with Commissioner Reiser, uh, and I, I think also with Commissioner Ward, that, uh, you know, there's, uh, some wiggle room here, um, as far as, you know, what might be the best way to approach this. Uh, it does occur to me that, uh, you know, since the difficult incidents seem to appear almost exclusively in the later hours, uh, on Friday and Saturday, um, that, uh, increasing or are changing from the nine o'clock for sales and nine thirty for consumption to nine thirty for sales and ten o'clock for consumption. On those, you know, other five nights is not, you know, it's not going to change much because there isn't much to change on those nights. And on the weekends, uh, it would, uh, give them an extra hour of non-consumption to, uh, to wind things down. Also, if it's on the weekend times, perhaps the second seating was a little later, um, that, uh, you know, if there's, sales can go to nine thirty, that means that you could at least order that first glass of wine, um, when, during the second seating. So, uh, as far as, you know, changing, putting it back a half hour to nine thirty, nine thirty and ten rather than nine, nine thirty, I think makes sense. As far as six months versus three months, um, I think that, uh, you know, if it, if we were to do it three months, it, uh, actually puts some pressure on the restaurant to, uh, really enforce that, you know, right away. Get, get some time in there that they, um, you know, are, you know, acting in the way that we, we want to see it. And, uh, you know, if, if they don't, we'll be able to act sooner to, you take further steps or to allow them to go back to the original A U P. So, uh, the three months, I think, is, is, um, at least I'm, I'm willing to consider that.
And they still, they clearly have a, still have a stake if they're trying to go from an A U P. to a C U P., et cetera. So they're trying to mine their Ps. and Qs, so to speak. So I think that's.
I will say, since you mentioned the C U P., um, as the city attorney has pointed out, we're not talking about extending hours at this point. That would be a, a discussion for C U P., uh, which again, as you point out, kind of depends on good behavior up to that point that you want to apply for that. So, um, all right, that's where I am right now. Commissioner Quark.
I, uh, just want to thank everybody for the thought that they've put into this. Um, and I am extremely respectful of the effort that the city staff and the police have put into making a recommendation and the business, uh, for trying to step up and respond to the concerns. Um, I'm struggling a little bit with the seriousness of the situation and respect for the city staff's recommendation and its impact on the business. So I'm not quite sure how to find a right marriage of that. Because I think it's serious. I think what happened is serious and I want to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And we have safe, uh, places for people to be entertained and to eat and to, um, enjoy in Walnut Creek. So I'm, I'm not quite sure about the middle road. I just can't quite figure out, um, how I feel about that.
Commissioner Quark.
Well, um, if, you know, Commissioner Ward wants to respond to Commissioner Quark, I had a separate thought that I wanted to give. But, you know, I'll let you go first if you have something to say.
I, I would just wanted to comment with regard to the time period. I, I do find the issue of, uh, perhaps being a little, um, giving a trial period that allowed the holiday period to be, um, a little more generous, uh, is compelling from a business standpoint, certainly. And something that we want to, uh, you know, most of the businesses are open a little later during that time period in our downtown area. So, um, I do understand that's a big concern, uh, but I, I have concerns about being able to prove the new operational standards, uh, within a very short period of time. I mean, it would be a like zero tolerance thing if we were, if we were going to do that, uh, like not a minute after kind of deal. Uh, so I, um, so that, that's something else that I'm, I'm thinking about in terms of a compromise.
Commissioner Quark.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, um, like I understand what the suggested times were. So I was hearing that, um, the, the weekday, so I would define that as Monday through Thursday because, um, the lieutenant, um, did say that Friday and Saturday were the, um, days where they had majority of their, um, incidents that ended up in the report. So I would define the weekend as like being Friday, Saturday and Sunday, uh, with respect to what hours we set. Am I hearing that, okay, so I had, the week would be nine and nine thirty as the, the times that we're looking at, Monday through Thursday? And then for Friday, Saturday?
So what was, um, proposed by staff, um, was to, uh, cease sales at nine o'clock and cease consumption at nine thirty. And what Commissioner Reiser was suggesting, and I was agreeing, was, um, that doing it at nine thirty for sales and ten o'clock for consumption.
And it's every day, not?
And that would be every day. So, so, uh, Sunday is also a ten o'clock closing. So it's, it's not weekdays and weekends. It's Friday and Saturday night versus the rest of the week. And, uh, so on, on the eleven o'clock closing times, consumption would still stop at ten.
Okay. I was under the impression that maybe we were going to make a split between Friday, Saturday versus the rest of the week, um, which I don't know if, if that would be more complex to justify or make findings for. Because it seems to me like the most significant area would be that how the hours are set for Friday and Saturday.
Commissioner Needy.
I also, um, I agree with my fellow commissioners about nobody wants to harm a good business in Walnut Creek. That's, that's not what we're here for. So I, I hope you can see that we're all struggling. The, the part that I, um, your, the food is fanta- I've only been twice because it's hard for me to get out with like very young children, so I just don't go out. The one thing I would say is, what's concerning me is that in the reports, I'm seeing females that are overly intoxicated. And so one thing, I, I know we're still going back and forth on the nine thirty and ten. I would like to see something in your business plan about having some sort of protocol about not over-serving. Because you're about food first. Your food is amazing. That's for me as a female, sort of young, I would like to see that. Right of, because the, the issue is that people are, are very smart and, and I remember in my college days that when you knew it was last call because they would shut down, you order three of the same drink. I mean, right? You chug it. So I, I would like to, I don't, I don't want people saying, you know what? We can manipulate the system and not, and not you, of course. It would be folks that are coming here potentially that could break this, that could break that rule and then just be, then, then all you're doing is moving the level of intoxication earlier, which is totally what we're trying to not fix. I, the last thing any of us want is three months from now, when the holidays are, are, are occurring, for the police department to come and say, they're just drunk earlier. Right? Then they need to eat more food. But that, that's personally what I would like to see as I'm thinking is if, if we do do this nine thirty cease, uh, pardon me, you cease sales and then the ten P M. cease consumption, I would like to see something where this is how we're training people to not over-serve the alcohol. Because I didn't see that.
Another question for the applicant.
I don't know if there was a question.
Okay.
May I clarify on this?
Yes, please.
The A B C. states and requires for us to, all the bartenders to carry a license. So that is a training program that, uh, we did not submit that, but it is required for all the restaurants and bars. So I have been bar manager a long period of time. I have been bartender. So I have also the experience and all my, uh, employees, they are very well aware of if one person is coming, they can only get one drink. You can't really get four, five drinks if there is no party next to you. So you, you are only allowed to get one drink and you cannot get another drink before you finished another drink. You can order it, but we will not serve you before you finish your drink. And there is a time period. So every, every hour, you can consume one drink. So it comes to when you are coming to the restaurant with bottle of wine at nine P M. And if you are two people, you can drink two glasses of wine in two hours of time. So that is stated and it is documented and I can share that, uh, uh, certificate of who serves at the bar. Whoever serves alcohol, they all certified and took that training. It is mandatory by the state.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
If, if I could, the.
Briefly.
The only thing I would have to add on this is, is that the police, the planning department, you all, you have our attention. Before, I would imagine it's ten fifty-nine, there's the sweep for glasses. Um, that's not happening anymore. I mean, there's an effort, you know, you got to have time for staff to do their job. And so this isn't going to be, you know, this is, this is their business, they're very successful business and they want to survive here and be positive in Walnut Creek for a long, long time. And so they're not going to be just under the wire any longer because frankly, I think that's how they got in trouble in some of these cases. Uh, so, uh, it's going to be taken seriously at, uh, more time has already been taken in order to make sure that they're complying. And that wasn't happening several months ago.
Thank you. All right. Anybody wish to propose a motion or further discussion? Commissioner Ward.
Um, I'd like to move that we approve the resolution as drafted, but modify the hours of sales and consumption to nine thirty for sales ending and consumption ending at ten and that we change the six-month kind of probationary period to three months.
And if I could just ask the commission, um, as I previously mentioned, the, um, as the recommendation has been set by staff, there would have to be additional factual findings to support this, the change in, um, in hours and the reduced amount of time. So if I could ask the commissioners to provide the, the basis for the change that they're recommending based on, on facts provided.
Absolutely. So I think that we can make those changes based on the testimony that we've received that there have been substantive changes in the operational, uh, procedures of the restaurant and that the, um, the managers of that establishment are now, um, clear about the rules that they're supposed to follow and have indicated that they have procedures in place to make sure that those rules are followed. Would that be sufficient for findings to support the change?
And while I can't go specifically point by point, I think some new data was brought to light tonight that where the, the breakdown was, where there was a lot of, you know, seeing forty-two points that kind of filtered out to four or six or whatnot, might, it might, might add to that as well.
I had one more, which is that, uh, uh, the change in the time at least, um, uh, would allow the, uh, five days of the week that are, it's, uh, open past ten, uh, to operate more efficiently. And that's the time when, um, even with the current situation, there has not been any issues.
Could you clarify? You'd mentioned the five days a week of open past ten. What, what did you?
The, the restaurant is open until ten on Sunday through Thursday. And those days, according to testimony, Lieutenant Slater, um, are not days when any of these events have happened. It's always been Friday or Saturday.
So there's no need to reduce the hours for Sunday through Thursday because there hasn't been an issue on those days?
So they've, they've been operating effectively, uh, then and could continue to operate under a similar situation.
Can I just?
I do have a clarifying question, maybe.
Okay. So we have a resolution that's like being done.
So can I clar- can I please clarify something?
Sure.
The business operating hours, um, to remain open to sell non-alcoholic, uh, drinks or food is not a violation and they could remain open even with this change. They could remain open till eleven P M. That's not related to the alcohol component. They just can't serve or, um, consume alcohol past eleven.
Right.
And the hours of operation just for the food is not, um, any increases not on the agenda at this time. So we're only looking at the alcohol.
Right.
Okay, so we, we kind of had a committee resolution here. Is that, has it been, are you clear on what we're trying to do?
So we have some, uh, feedback from the planning commission and, um, as I noted before, the staff would need to come back, be able to draft additional recitals, uh, and for the resolution and come back to the planning commission, uh, with an amended resolution with the commission's recommended hour change.
So the motion would be to direct staff to, um, update the draft resolution. Uh, one thing that we would, um, request that, that you add this piece of the language that staff had suggested. And then we can also, um, transition some of these findings in, into the, um, specific findings for number two and four as appropriate.
Okay, so if we can so modify that resolution, um, that's the resolution I'm making. So there it is.
There a second?
And it's been second, yeah.
Second, okay.
The second was Commissioner Reiser.
Commissioner Reiser.
Thank you.
If, if I may clarify, the, the motion this evening would be just to direct staff to come back with the resolution. The resolution itself would not be approved this evening.
I mean, you're telling us we can't do it. So that, that's the resolution. Thank you.
If I may, I don't know why it can't be done this evening. Uh, if you come back and you notice the meeting and it's going to be in two or three more weeks, then the ninety days is in the middle of December and, and the holidays is over. So, um, uh, I don't know why the resolution is a very good one. You're just inserting different hours. Uh, and, um, And the findings can go in the record in the minutes. And so, just doing the math, it would get us into the middle of December. And that was not one of my initial goals with this, is that if we do a good job, make sure that the police department is happy with this, then the holidays are, which is one of the biggest times for restaurant sales in the country, we'd be in business.
I understand. Thank you.
Staff proposes that we take a recess and maybe consider crafting the findings.
Took the words out of my mouth.
If that's something that the commission would like to consider.
With the concurrence of the commission, we'll take eight, ten minutes.
I would prefer that, but...
Recess.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for your patience as we worked on these findings. So we have additional findings, additional information to include in the resolution. And I will read out in its entirety, if you would like me to repeat anything, just let me know. So in Section 2 of Findings of the Resolution, at the very bottom, a statement would be added to the resolution that would address both findings that would state as follows. At the August 22, 2024 Planning Commission Public Hearing, the ELEA business owners provided additional information regarding operational changes and clarity on their updated business plan that was created subsequent to the July 18, 2024 Notice of Public Hearing. The ELEA business owners also provided evidence of successful implementation of those changes since the notice of violation and notice of public hearing was issued on July 18, 2024. Walnut Creek Police Department also provided additional clarity that with regards to the 42 calls of service, 17 total were related to alcohol-related incidents. This information served to clarify that not all 42 calls were related to alcohol-related incidents and helped distinguish between incidents that served as AUP violations versus incidents that did not. This additional information provided at the August 22, 2024 Hearing showed to the Planning Commission that the ELEA business owners are taking accountability to address past violations and action to prevent any future AUP violations. Accordingly, the Planning Commission makes findings to modify staff's original recommendation to 9:30 PM and cease sales of service of alcohol, sorry, to 9:30 PM to cease sales and service of alcohol and 10:00 PM to cease alcohol consumption with a three-month probationary period to allow ELEA to come into compliance. Section 3 is decision. The language would be amended in the first primary paragraph that would change the statement of modifying the AUP by requiring ELEA to cease sales and service of alcohol at 9:30 PM and cease consumption of alcohol at 10:00 PM seven days a week. And after three months from the date of the AP's modification, staff would review in accordance with this resolution. The additional change that would be implemented, as on your screen, would be adding in a section between Section 3 and Section 4 to add in a statement of stating each portion of this resolution is severable, should any portion of this resolution be adjudged to be invalid and unenforceable by a body of competent jurisdiction, as you see in front of you. Yes? Are there any questions of the statements that were just made or anything to change or add?
Just to make sure that on that first primary paragraph of Section 3 toward the very end, there's another reference to 9 and 9:30, it would be 9:30 and 10:00, there's two references.
That's correct. Anywhere that it references 9 or 9:30, we will change it to 9:30 to 10:00.
I'll ask the maker of the motion if she will accept those changes.
I'll accept those changes, thank you.
Second. Second. All right, any further discussion? Can you call a roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Strongman is absent. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on. Item 4C is to be continued. Is there anyone here for item 4C? I think you're the only member of the public left. No? Very good. In that case, with the concurrence of the Commission, the Bourbon Highway Project 4C will be re-noticed and continued to a date uncertain. All right. Item 4D. We have an eager staff member, ready to go. Whenever you are ready.
Well, good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. Ben Schuster with Community Development, here to talk to you tonight. Really, this is about a kind of a celebration in our Design Review Standards and Guidelines Update project, which has been ongoing for the last five or so years. Tonight, we're going to be taking a look at the adoption draft of the Non-Residential Design Review Standards and Guidelines document, to answer any questions, receive any comments you might have on that, and then to also bring forth to the Commission for Recommendation to Council a number of associated zoning code amendments related to that effort. I want to note, you did receive at the DIAS a public comment that was given to our Community Development Director prior to tonight's meeting. We'll touch on that a little bit later in the presentation. And I also have with me tonight Alessandra Lundin with Raymond Associates, and she'll be giving that high-level walkthrough of the non-residential book a little bit later. So I think it's kind of easiest to think of this work in kind of these six distinct pieces. This is kind of the totality of what we're going to be taking forth to the Council on September 17th, about a month from now. The Commission is not acting on all pieces tonight, but because of how interrelated everything is, we felt it best to at least kind of give everyone the full picture, so you have a sense of how the code amendments relate to everything else. So moving into our Design Review Standards and Guidelines, again, as a refresher, this was an effort to comprehensively update our 1996 Design Review Guidelines, started about five years ago. And the initial impetus was in response to state housing law, which required the use of objective standards for residential projects. However, the Council at that time also took the opportunity to direct staff to update standards for our commercial developments as well. And so what that translated into was these two documents, a residential and residential mixed-use document and then a non-residential document. So the residential document was adopted by the Council about two months ago, and this Commission saw that not too long ago as well. Staff is proposing very minor amendments, we'll touch on that a little bit later. And then the main piece here is the non-residential adoption draft. Very similar look and feel to the residential book, so as you went through it, it should feel very familiar. And a lot of the standards are actually the same as they are in the residential book because that book also encompassed mixed-use standards. And just to remind the Commission, with the non-residential book, the city is retaining most of its discretion that it has today for our non-residential, mainly commercial projects here in the city. And so the Design Review Commission, this body, and the Community Development Director will all kind of have a lot more discretion on those projects than we will for residential projects. Kind of wanted to say a big thank you to the City Working Group who worked very diligently on this effort. on this effort for the past five or so years. This was a group comprised of city staff from a number of different departments in planning, building, engineering, economic development, as well as two members of the Design Review Commission. And so again, you know, just a big thank you to all of their time. And it really informed the process, and we think it made quite a bit of a better product. Brief look at where we are remaining schedule. This timeline only goes back two years, but you can see with the black arrow there on your screen, that's where we are right now. And then after that, there's essentially just one more meeting at Council, and then this project will wrap up. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over again to Alessandra. She's going to give you a high-level walkthrough of the non-residential book.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. As Ben mentioned, I'm going to go through, briefly summarize the content of the non-residential design standards and guidelines. So here you see kind of the high-level project objectives. Of course, similar to the residential book, they are to promote quality architecture, site planning, and landscaping in the city. We wanted to, again, provide a very clear set of design criteria for applicants, create a user-friendly document with lots of diagrams and images, modernize for current best practices. We also have focused on gaps in the 1996 guidelines, so we fill those in. Some topics included, newly included are outdoor dining. And then you'll see that the non-residential standards and guidelines specifically address a couple of special uses, and those are auto sales and rental, auto service stations, and with or without convenience markets, drive-through restaurants, and shopping centers. So on this slide, you'll see kind of the high-level table of contents for the document. Again, it's very similar to the residential book. The high-level chapters or topics are an intro. There's a site planning chapter, architecture and building design, parking, walls and fences, lighting, and then a chapter on those special uses I just talked about. And again, I'm just going to briefly go through some of those, you know, what's covered under each of those key topic areas. So the Site Design Chapter covers access and circulation standards such as creating smaller blocks and new connections, minimizing curb cuts and driveways, and creating pedestrian pathways that connect sidewalks to building frontages, outdoor spaces, bike parking, transit streets, and parking areas. Within services and utilities, we have standards for locating services and services, utilities, and equipment to the rear and side of buildings and screening them from public view. And then we have a number of landscaping standards. They focus on minimum size and spacing. There's some limitations on turf and stormwater management. Within building design, these standards really focus on portions of the building that are visible from the street, the public realm, and outdoor spaces. So they include orienting buildings and entries towards the street and outdoor spaces, mediating the scale, massing, and bulk of buildings, and enhancing the pedestrian experience through building modulation and articulation, and then creating inviting and well-designed and usable ground floor retail spaces through standards that address transparency, retail depth and height, entries and awnings, and outdoor dining, among others. And then lastly, we encourage a variety of materials and colors that really add visual interest to buildings. Additional topics covered in the book include parking, so locating parking to the rear and side of buildings, creating pedestrian routes through parking areas, and screening surface and structured parking from public view. And then within lighting, a lot of the standards focus on creating pedestrian-scale lighting and reducing light trespass. And now I'm going to talk a little bit more about that last chapter of the document. So it covers a couple of special uses that really require some special design consideration. While updating the special use standards and guidelines, it really became apparent that some of these design standards already overlapped with standards that were in the zoning code, or they kind of more appropriately belonged there because they were more development standards than design standards. And Ben is going to cover some of those code amendments for these special uses later in the presentation. So this slide highlights some of the standards and guidelines specific to shopping centers. We have building design and articulation standards. We have required publicly accessible private outdoor space. There are standards on pedestrian pathways, so design dimensions and materials. We have limitations on curb cuts and driveways, and then street and corner activation. And then a couple of auto uses. We cover auto sales and leasing, so auto dealerships and auto service stations. So the 1996 standards and guidelines were updated and improved to really add clarity and address best practices and recent development trends, such as encouraging pedestrian-oriented urban auto showrooms and limiting outdoor vehicle display areas along the street frontage. We also added and improved the landscaping, fencing and wall and screening standards for auto sales and auto service stations, really to minimize their impacts on the street frontage and the pedestrian experience. And then lastly, this slide highlights some of the topics and standards covered for drive-up takeout restaurants. These are drive-throughs, such as requiring landscaping along the perimeters and drive-up aisles, orienting building entries towards the street rather than parking areas, encouraging four-sided architecture, providing separate and distinct vehicular and pedestrian circulation, and then there's some outdoor dining design standards. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ben.
So I want to go back to the auto sales slide real quick and then to touch upon the public comment that we received prior to today's meeting. So that was from a member of Gensler Architects, a well-known architecture firm. And the individual's comments were all focused on this chapter. That's Chapter 7.1 of the Design Review Standards and Guidelines. That's Attachment 1 of your packets. And so, you know, just wanted to note, the majority of the design standards and guidelines in that chapter actually came from the Council adopted North Downtown specific plan, which was adopted in 2019. And I think Alessandra kind of touched on the main drive behind many of those standards, which was to kind of limit or move away from that suburban-style auto dealership into more of an urban-focused design. With that being said, you know, we are going to be working with the individual to consider their comments as part of the adoption draft prior to going to Council. So moving on to the residential design standards, and again, we're not looking for the Commission's, any Commission action on this tonight, but again, just for some context. So the Residential Design Review Standards and Guidelines book, we are proposing two very small amendments to the Council. One is just to add in some clarifying language as to the applicability of the document, basically saying there are some single-family homes and additions to single-family homes that don't trigger design review, and so this document would not apply to that. And then conversely, there are some projects that do not require design review, but still have, but this document still contains standards that we want those to comply with, such as SB 9 developments. And then we also tweaked one standard relating to secondary and accent colors for the exterior of buildings. Okay, moving on to development standards. So there are essentially three topic areas relating to non-residential development centers that we tweaked. And again, these match up very closely with the topic areas that Alessandra just covered. So we changed the definition of a shopping center. We added new or revised standards for kind of the gas station use, and then also added in entire new standards for the drive-through restaurant use. So for shopping centers, we basically just made it a little bit, what's the word I'm looking for, more flexible to accommodate kind of new development patterns. And then we're relocating this language, which is currently in our sign ordinance, into the zoning code. For the gas station use, we're doing a couple things, slightly increasing the canopy size, removing this BURN requirement for landscaping, then adding in new standards for circulation, screening, and illumination. These were born out of the working group's effort and conversations with gas station businesses. With the drive-up, the drive-through, fast-food use classification, again, adding in new standards relating to the aisle design, stacking, queuing areas, curb cuts, and then also pedestrian access. And then finally, we're proposing one very small tweak to residential development standards. These were recently adopted by Council a few months ago. This is the updated landscaping standard for single-family and duplex zones. And basically, we've added in this clarifying language that the landscaping requirement in the front and corner side yards excludes the driveway area. And then to kind of round things out, we are making some small tweaks to the Design Review article. That's Article 12, Part 4 of the zoning code, in relation to what is a minor project. And just to remind the Commission, a minor project is one approved by the Community Development Director. The intent of splitting this crossed-out language at the top into three parts was essentially to clarify that the CDD Director should be able to consider the design review application for any sized addition to an existing single-family home or duplex. And this is in line with their approval authority for new development, where the Director can approve up to four single-family homes or duplexes. And then we would still limit the approval authority of the Director for multifamily or commercial additions to 500 square feet or less, after which it would be kicked to this body. And then we also added in, as a minor project, approval of outdoor dining spaces. Corresponding to that, we also amended the outdoor dining ordinance and outdoor dining policy. Those fall outside of the Commission's consideration, but again, including that here for context. Basically, what we did was add in clarifying language regarding design review, who does what, adding in some findings relating to outdoor dining, and then again, taking away the Design Review Commission's approval authority into an advisory one. And so tonight, the recommendation we are looking for is for the Commission to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance to implement the following things: new and modified non-residential standards, minor amendments to recently adopted residential standards, and then minor modifications to the design review process and role of the Design Review Commission. And then briefly, next steps. Again, tonight is an opportunity for the Commission to ask questions or provide any comments on the, informal comments on the non-residential book. If there are any, we will be taking those, synthesizing those, and including them in our report to the Council. And then we're going to bring all six items that we touched on today to the Council on September 17 for consideration. And so with that, that concludes our staff presentation, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Questions or staff? I've got a couple. Would it be fair to say, just looking at the modification, the red line modifications that you had, would it be fair to say that most of it is sort of cleanup work? You know, this particular aspect wasn't covered. We got to put a line or two in there, and basically just kind of tightening it all up?
I think the tightening it all up would be a fair assessment, yeah.
The one exception to that seems to be, I mean, you've got a whole page and a half of new material on the gasoline-based things. Was that sort of an oversight in the first round, or was there some kind of major decision that required that going? I'm kind of wondering what, what's the background of that, that decision to redo that whole thing?
Yeah, good question. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you know, the decision to bring it forth as part of the non-residential work instead of the residential work a few months ago was mainly because these are not, these are special uses, not typically associated with a mixed-use development. And so it just kind of got bundled into this commercial work. Is that, is that what you're asking, or?
So it sounds like it was a decision made to move it into the, into the non-residential. Maybe I'm not understanding.
And I apologize. I'm not sure I'm completely following.
Are you referring to the addition of a new section in the zoning code for drive-through restaurants, which didn't exist before?
Look at Page 7 of Exhibit A, I think it is. You know, it's just all new material. That's the only place that occurs in the proposed changes.
Oh, yes, yes. So the city has a whole section in the zoning code on special uses with, and each of those special uses has, you know, specific development standards associated with them. And interestingly, the zoning code did not have a, or the zoning code special use section did not have a chapter or a section for drive-through restaurants. But there were a lot of standards and guidelines in the 1996 document related to drive-through restaurants, and some of them were not strictly design standards. They were actually development standards that really should belong in the zoning code. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And the last question I had was, in Exhibit A, it says a project should be classified either a minor or a major project. And then the next sentence says a project subject ministerial design review, which will always be acted on by the Community Development Director. I'm just, is that, I think what that means is there can be minor projects or major projects which, for under state law or under the local ordinance, are ministerial. So it's, there's a division between minor and major projects, but if they're ministerial by some other standard, they go to the Community Development Director.
That's, that's correct. And it makes more sense. This is just an excerpt of that entire article, and so, you know, reading the whole article, it makes a lot more sense, you know, the context, so. But you're correct.
Didn't read the whole article. Okay, thank you. Other questions? Very good. Thank you very much. I'll call for any public comment at this point. Seeing no eager applicants, we'll pass on to discussion from the Commission. Do they have any comments?
So are we being asked to just recommend what you've given us here to the Council for their adoption?
Yes. So what's on the screen here is, is the only formal recommendation tonight. But again, if there were comments or questions on the non-residential book, we would also entertain those.
Or you could offer a motion.
Okay, I'd like to, I would like to, I'm looking for the draft motion here. I would like to adopt the resolution recommended by staff that the city council adopt an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance to implement the changes that you've outlined at today's presentation.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
Just to thank you for the incredible amount of work that you've done to get here. When you said celebration, I feel like we are at an end, hopefully. So great work.
All right. Then I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klop?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Strongman is absent. Motion passes.
Send to staff. Item five, Commission considerations. Anybody on the Commission considerations? Any reports or announcements?
No reports by staff tonight. Thank you.
And item seven is adjournment. Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.